Stream and it's gonna try to go to a website for YouTube and you can close one, once it gets to the YouTube website, Miki, you can close it or you can mute it. And in YouTube, I think you're seeing it in a different window on a different monitor.
And it's gonna try to.
Yep, there you go. We're live.
All right, so thank you, Juan. I'm gonna welcome everybody. Eric King, City Manager of Bend. This is our first Council Sub, Stewardship Council Subcommittee with this new council that just took office in January and the intent of these subcommittees, just to provide a little bit of background and context is that they're really aimed at helping us as staff, as well as our boards and committees that we have helping us do our work, get connected, help shape scope work that's included in council goals and the related work plan. And to make sure that we are from a, you know, high level, really doing this work in partnership with our other public agencies, private entities, et cetera, which is really the, the brand behind stewardship. And we say, we've got two subcommittees of council, one is focused on, on stewardship. And then the other is community building, the, the kind of differentiation is the items that will be coming before you as a subcommittee include items that might not be in our direct core services. So we talk about homelessness or climate action planning. Those aren't our, we don't necessarily have departments that do solely those activities, but we have a, a piece of the solution, whether it be through our land use system, or it be through a law enforcement, or through a regulatory perspective. When we talk about our environment and climate action plan. But we are just one piece of the puzzle and there's many agencies involved. And so this first subcommittee meeting is just with the council counselors. We'll have future opportunities where we'll ask members of our boards and committees to join us and helping think through some of the the issues and challenges that are related to council goals. But this one, the agenda was fairly simple and it was somewhat time sensitive. Normally, we wouldn't start these subcommittees until after the start of the fiscal year, when you officially kick off the work plan related to your council goals. But we felt it was important to get this one moving pretty quickly because it involves the use of the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. So our sole agenda today is to, to take the information that we shared at a pretty high level with the Budget Committee a few weeks ago, to take that input, marry it with the council goals, marry that with the the allowed uses that have been stated. And then we've got some additional details that have come out from the federal government and start putting a plan together. We have some time. This is a little different than the CARES Act funds that came out last year where it was, the funds had to be spent by the end of the calendar year in 2020. This is till 2024. So we want to be thoughtful. And so we have a presentation, I'm going to turn this over to Miki Durting to provide us with some background on, on where things are at, kind of take us from the, recapture some of the information we shared with you all at the Budget Committee. And then talk more specifically about a recommended plan. And a lot of the folks that you see on this call are the staff that comprise of our internal steering committee that are helping put together a, this, this, this framework plan that we'll share with you. So before I turn it over to Miki to lead us with the presentation, I just wanted to make sure there aren't any questions and or confusion about the, the role of this committee and its kind of primary function. Yep. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Miki to get us started. And I'll come back in at the end.
Hi, Juan. It's saying that I'm not allowed to share right now. Can you help me out, please?
Oh, hi, Miki. You should be able to just hit share screen in the middle of your.
I'm hitting that right now. Okay, great. Okay, share. All right. Are you able to see it, everybody?
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind just putting it into presentation mode, perfect. There you go.
Okay, great. Thank you, Miki Durting, Strategic Initiatives Manager out of the City Manager's Office. American Rescue Plan Act, you also hear it called ARP or ARPA, ARPA. On behalf of the city's internal ARPA Task Force, I'm here to present to you an overview of ARPA, our task force proposal for the city of Ben's 14.08 million fund allocation and to request for your alignment. So at the end of this presentation, we're going to ask you your thoughts on our proposal for quick strike allocation, outline of spend categories and our collaboration with partners. So first, we're going to give you an overview. This overview, you've already heard at the budget session. So this will be a refresher for those tuning in for the first time. This will be the first time they're hearing about it. So there's federal funding programs called Build Back Better. Build Back Better is President Biden's three-part agenda to rescue, recover and rebuild the country. It includes three plans. The first one is called the ARPA, which was signed into law March 11th. And the plan is to rescue the country from the crisis caused, caused by COVID-19 pandemic. Its purpose is to provide direct relief to Americans, contain COVID-19 and build a bridge to economic recovery. The second plan is, was introduced March 31st and the plan is to make an investment in America and to create millions of good jobs, rebuild our country's infrastructure and position the US to outcompete China. And then the, oh, by the way, the American Jobs Plan, you hear people call it also the Infrastructure Plan. The third plan is called American Families Plan, and that's a plan to rebuild the middle class and invest in America's future. Basically, we're going to be talking about the ARPA, that's 1. trillion, 1.9 trillion dollars. That's the one that's passed already and it's being allocated and dispersed through all these different buckets across the nation. Where we fall is under the state and local fiscal recovery funds where 350 billion dollars is allocated. Out of that 350 billions, 2.6 billion is allocated to the state of Oregon and 14.08 million to the city of Ben. Out of the 2.6 billion allocated to the state of Oregon, each senator is receiving 4 million, each representative is receiving 2 million. Our local delegation earmarked 4 million for the city of Ben, 2 million for low barrier shelters and 2 million for midtown over crossing. Here are the eligible uses of funds that we know it's eligible today. Equity-focused services to serve the hard-hit communities and families, public health response, this is again to contain COVID-19, negative economic impact, assist support workers and families, small businesses, impacted industries such as tourism and hospitality, public sector revenue loss, premium pay for essential workers, prioritizing lower income workers, key sectors, infrastructures, specifically water sewer and broadband, ineligible or pension fund contributions, debt service, fund reserves. So the timeline for the ARPA funds, we're receiving 14.08 million dollars. We received the first half today. And then we're going to receive the second half, 12 months from today. We don't have to apply for it. We don't have to request for reimbursement. It's going to be directly allocated to us from the Department of Treasury. We simply have to track it and report that we're spending it the way they said we should spend it. We formed an internal ARPA Task Force and we're looking through, of course, the lens of our city council goals. Fiscal year 2123, today we're presenting to you and we'd like to come back to the table again, June 2021 and invite three committees and advisory boards, so BDAB, AHAAC and also Human Rights and Equity Commission, because we'd like for their help to fill in the details. And then we'd like to propose to council July 2021 in alignment with the budget supplement. And if council approves our proposal, we'd like to execute as soon as August, September 2021. We have until December 31st, 2024 to expand the funds. And we're looking at it three ways, quick strike dispersment, and we want to get it into people's hands that really need it right away as soon as we could possibly get it to them. And then time distribution, so we could be more strategic and thoughtful about distributing the funds over through 2024 and collaborate with partners throughout that process as well. So who's on the ARPA Task Force? We have the Head of Economic Development, Carolyn Egan, and her team, Lynn McConnell, she has affordable housing, and we have Ben Hampson, who's going to be focused on BDAB's strategic plan. Shelley Smith is from the City Manager's Office and she could, she's going to be focused on the vulnerable population. And because eligible uses on infrastructure, water and sewer, we invited Utility Department Head Michael Bitner to the table. And then also on his team is Dana Wilson. She's going to be focused on utility assistance. We have our Assistant CFO as our technical ARPA guru, Tracy Stabler. And to make sure we're following the rules, we have legal and procurement, Mike is from, Mike Saltkirk is from the City Attorney's Office and Gwen Chapman leads our procurement department. So we had the budget session and we heard the city council and budget committee let us know where we want to allocate these ARPA funds. And here are the priorities that we heard you say. You, you said that you wanted us to make sure that we were collaborating with the different agencies, looking at supporting small businesses, putting some of this funds into city services and rent relief, houselessness, vulnerable population. So we took wait, the Fed said are the eligible uses. We looked at the city council fiscal year 2123 goals and the city council and budget committee priorities. And we took, we, we had the ARPA Task Force come together and we felt that 10% would be reasonable to release for quick strike funding if needed. And we proposed that we allocate for quick strike funding for housing and houselessness, affordable housing, increasing cost relief, and then funding for managed camps, low barrier shelter, permanent supportive housing, contracts for support services, and then city services, services and support to build a bridge to economic recovery, BDAB's strategic plan for childcare, workforce development and utility assistance. Then for the long-term, more strategic, thoughtful funding from 2021 to 2024, we proposed that we spend 90% of the funding for housing, houselessness, affordable housing funding, funding gaps for AHAAC-approved projects, that's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Transitional Housing Shelter Operations, Vulnerable Population Services, BDAB, that's Bend Economic Development Advisory Board, Business Assistance, Angel Investor Funding, Growth and Development, Workforce Training, Childcare. You know, the city council and budget committee put infrastructure as a priority, so we put that in. Michael Bitner is gonna help us identify where we could invest water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure, city services, utility assistance. And again, we're going to invite the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and the Human Rights Equity Commission to help us fill in the details for funding allocation. There's so much money coming from all these different places, so we're going to make sure that we're partnering with our different partners, we're collaborating with all our different fund partners. We want to make sure that we're saving the funds for, for the local funds for gaps and priorities that are not eligible for these federal, state, county funding. And I want to show you another angle of this is looking at the priorities and all these different fundings from Fed, state, private entities, nonprofits. So, and we, we're going to look at like making sure we're not double dipping, eliminating duplication of efforts, we're optimizing our funds. Basically, we want to collaborate with partners to best serve our communities and deliver on the intention of the funding, and that's to provide direct relief to Americans, contain COVID-19, build a bridge to economic gap, I mean, excuse me, economic recovery. And then while at the same time, keeping in mind that, you know, we want to make sure we're aligning with the fiscal year 2123 city council goals and the city council and budget committee priorities. We've already, for example, we've already, the COIC Executive Director spearheading meeting, coordinating a meeting for regional funding discussion. We're going to have the Governor's Office at the table, cities like Sisters, La Pi and La Redmond, counties like Jefferson and the Chutes County, and then Eric and I are going to be there. We have, we're coordinating to have the first meeting with the Emergency Homelessness Task Force, where you have the city and county leaders at the table as law, as well as houselessness, community stakeholders like Kovo, Neighbor Impact, Shepherd's House, Bethlehem and HLC and Mosaic, where we're going to be talking on our first agenda about the ARPA funds as well. So going back to the process and the timeline, we're presenting to you today, we'd like to come back again, June 2021 and invite a, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board and the Human Rights Equity Commission to the table, so that they can help fill in the details. And then we'll, you know, provide you with progress report, reports biannually. We'd like to get city county approval, excuse me, city council approval for quick strike funding by July 2021, align that with supplemental budget. And if they approve it, execute as soon as August and September, approval will be partner, collaborating with partners all throughout this process as well. That concludes our presentation.
Miki, Miki, I think you might have just frozen for a little bit, the last, that slide right there. I don't know if that was just me. Did anybody else? You might just repeating that slide.
Oh, yeah, sure. So again, the process and timeline is the Stewardship Subcommittee, we're meeting today, representing our proposal for funding allocation. And then we'd like to come back to the table again, June 2021 and invite the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and then also the Bend Economic Development Advisory Board and the Human Rights and Equity Commission, so they can help us fill in the details. And then we'll be reporting to you progress biannually. And then we'd like to get the city council approval by July, so that we're aligning with the supplemental budget for quick strike funding. And if approved, we'd like to execute as soon as August or September 2021. And of course, we have till 2024 to expand the funds. And throughout this process, we're going to be collaborating with our partners. And that concludes our presentation. We'd like to get your thoughts on the quick strike allocation, outline of spend categories, our collaboration with partners. And again, we have our ARPA Task Force here to answer any questions you might have.
And so maybe I think what would help, Miki, and getting to that first question is going back to the slide that has the proposed allocation for the, what we're calling quick strike. And so I, I think what, what I, I want to just reiterate, what we want to do is be really thoughtful and spending these, these resources over the next, we've really got three years to spend them. And so was it 10% is what we came up with? I'd love to hear the council subcommittee's thoughts about that. And these are broadly the categories, kind of focusing on housing homelessness. When we talk about city services, just to add a little bit more to that, I think that one of the things that came clear as part of the Budget Committee meetings is the need for our particularly permitting, our community development functions, to making sure that we're removing any kind of barriers to getting needed development and to, to kind of couple the, our efforts to build a supplemental budget. I mentioned that as, as kind of a a, a next step to some of the discussion that we had at the Budget Committee, combining this effort, both the ARPA funds, as well as the need to shore up some of our, our city services that are, just our demand is outpacing our current service level and to do that collectively. And to the extent that some of those ARPA funds can be used for issues related to equity, related to getting more housing on the ground, et cetera, I think we'd like to explore that. So that's that city services piece. And then the BDAB strategic plan, as Miki mentioned, there's a lot of funds that are providing direct assistance to businesses. So a little bit unlike what we did a year ago where we provided, we had a partnership program with the chamber, where the chamber then was responsible for vetting applications. And there were some criteria that were established. There are now separate processes in place for that. So I, I don't think we envisioned at this time around for the city to be a direct funder for, for business, for, for individual businesses, but what more or less look at sort of larger needs around workforce development or childcare, things like that would be a better use of, of funds than a direct payment to, to businesses. Then of course, utility assistance, just helping us, especially as we are dealing with a housing crisis and how do we prevent people from losing their homes? What kind of assistance can be provided to, with, with our utility payments beyond just electricity and gas, but our water utilities that we provide? So maybe let's just leave this slide up and entertain a discussion around our reaction, I guess, to, to this proposal. And anything that you wanted to see up there that you didn't, anything that you'd like clarification on, we'll just sort of hang here for a bit.
I guess my, my first thought is that, you know, 1.4 million dollars. I could see it going towards one of these things, but I just don't see how you can have an impact on all of these things, you know, with 1.4 million dollars. And if it's just going to be little bits and pieces going to each. I, I'm a little confused about that. I understand that, that we're talking about, you know, partnering up with the county and that kind of thing, but if we're talking about moving so quickly for this 1.4, I was just hoping someone could kind of explain how you see that being implemented.
Sure, Miki, do you want to, because the, the task force came up with this recommendation. Do you want to, is there anybody on the task force that can help? Answer that, or if you want to take a stab at it?
I'd be happy to kind of give you our thoughts. I, I think the 1.4 was meant to, we didn't want the community to feel like we were just taking the money and putting it in a long-term plan if there was some ultimate need that we wanted to be responsive to them. So the idea was is to look at what, we knew there's a lot of money coming in for childcare, for business assistance, for, you know, a couple of the industries, but we wanted to be prepared to contribute if it was needed in that kind of a very short-term timeframe and kind of just be more responsive, but not necessarily say we're accomplishing a, a significant task. It was just more, we didn't want people to wait if there is an urgent need to get some money out there.
And then one other thing I would mention too, I think there's a lot, especially it's been on top of mind for council is Project Turnkey. And we've made some mention to say, you know, we are doing our best to apply for funds and if, if we're not successful with Project Turnkey, we might want to look at the use of ARPA funds. That would not be included in that 1.4 million. That would be a separate conversation that we would need to have. And that might be something we would, you know, have in partnership with, with the county perhaps. So Carolyn, anything to add from your perspective?
Yeah, I think Tracy said it. So I, I would just put two maybe points on it. One, it was really meant to get a nod from council that we could deploy buckets, small buckets of money to any of these initiatives very quickly in partnership with others. So for instance, on the workforce development side, we sort of understand that the governor is very, very likely going to reinstate the search for work requirement for those who are receiving unemployment insurance. And so there may be some workforce training programs that we could incentivize to be developed, developed specifically for the industries in Bend. And so if this small business development center or COCC, we're going to do a construction apprenticeship program or something. They may put forward most of the money, but we'll say, okay, we're going to contribute some funds to get that off the ground for the summer, so that we have that training in place right away, rather than waiting for, for the fall or something. Similarly, for all of the housing is that if we do, you know, if we do in the next couple of months, get some shelters open, we're going to need to guarantee operational funding through the end of the calendar year. These are the funds that could be used for that. So I think it was just a, these were the broad, broad categories of funding needs that we saw, that we would want to be able to deploy money quickly. And then really make sure we're creating long-term programs for the balance of the funds. So really just said what Tracy did. Thanks, Eric.
Just from my perspective, I would not, I, I, I'm not I, I don't think it's necessary to limit ourselves to 1.4 on immediate projects. If there's a project that warrants funding up to and including the full amount, 7 million dollars in this year, I would be open to allocating whatever amount is necessary to accomplish our goals. So if you're asking, are we willing to, if, if each of us are willing to spend 1.4 million dollars quickly, I mean, I, I just, for me, I'm ready to go on, you know, the entire amount for the calendar year, if we have a good project, multiple projects, for instance, ones where we have a commitment to be a funding partner with the county, particularly when it comes to the managed camp here and the affordable housing components, I'm willing to, I, I don't think we should limit ourselves to a specific amount. I also think it's important to at least understand for us, what commitments do we have from the county? The way I look at it, they have 20 million dollars at least that they need to allocate to the city of Bend. Half the people in the county live here. They're getting 40 million dollars. I sure hope that the county looks at it the same way we do, that this is where the impacts are. And I, and I would love to see you know, that commitment formalized pretty early in the game here, so that we know, you know, can we force multiply these dollars with the county dollars, particularly when it comes to, again, the managed camp and affordable housing? So I don't, I guess just for me, I don't want to be limited to 10% when we talk about quick strike.
Yeah, that's helpful. I think we just sort of threw that out there as a as a stake in, to have the conversation, but I think there is and, and also a desire to make sure that we don't in expediency trade off the ability for us to garner partners and multiply some of our efforts, instead of just running in and trying to solve some of these problems that we're actually holding some of those funds back to be able to have those conversations with partners that just sometimes take some time to, to do. Other, other feedback on either the, yeah, either the amount or just the, the general sort of broad categories, did we, is there anything that you see in the, in these, in how we are describing these categories that you would like to see or that you need you know, further clarification on?
What is, what is workforce development and how does it differ from what we already do through COIC? And is there other funding already for workforce development? I tend to think I've heard that there was, but I'm curious, Carolyn.
Unfortunately, it looks like the governor's budget will cut our regional workforce funding dollars by up to 20%, which is absolutely counterintuitive to what is happening now. So we're, there's lots of advocacy going on to stop that from happening, but it looks like the Portland area generally was allocated the majority of the workforce development funds and the other regions of the state took cuts to those funds. So that's one thing that's going on, sort of in real time, Council of Robin. I think the other is to really make sure that COCC, the work that they're doing is absolutely in the industries that we know need to be prioritized. And so the two that we've identified at this point is around construction and how to get employees who might be interested in trans, you know, transferring from another industry into construction. And then the other is around childcare, both are two industries that the council has prioritized and we don't have really good pipeline for those two industries. So we'd like to, we'd like to build that out and pilot some curriculum and pilot some other services. As we know, it's not just about training that sometimes prevents people from getting back to work. And so how can we make sure we provide all the services for those programs and see what works and what doesn't? As we wait for the decisions to be made around the regional workforce allocations. There should be a lot more money coming in workforce development than there is. It, it doesn't make sense right now. So we're tracking it.
Is, is there, I didn't see on the, I can't remember the other slide, but is there anything in here for supporting, I know that we're talking about doing that with some of our general fund money, but supporting mobile crisis, you know, MCAT, that kind of thing? Is that on the other?
Not, not, I think that would be to me more of that partnership category with the Emergency Homelessness Task Force is a discussion that we would have with the county and there might be some potential pooling of our local dollars and county dollars for something like that. But I, I think we just was seeing if we're going to try to execute something quickly in the next couple of months, that probably wouldn't fit that category. It would be something that would take a little more time to define and resource, program resources for it.
I'll, I'll just add, I mean, to me, the, while I, I think childcare and workforce development are huge threats to our, the lack of those. to our, the lack of those are huge threats to our progress as a city. I, I think it's a more, I feel like the more acute, you know, COVID-related issue right now is the inability of people to afford to live here. And while I, you know, I want people who live here to be able to have childcare, if we have folks who are commuting because of the price of housing or losing their homes, you know, again, I don't want to minimize childcare and workforce development, but I tend to think of housing and homelessness as much more acute issues. And I see the city services component here as described as accomplishing primarily our housing goals. And so I would move, I, I see that the orange square here as part of the housing and homelessness part. I also see utility and assistance as us doing everything we can to make sure that, you know, even with a moratorium in place, people aren't losing their homes or losing their place to live because of costs of that housing. So that's sort of how I see the priority here. I know I'm just, I'm just one person, but the crisis here of housing, and we know that the, the main thing we can do for homelessness is to improve the affordability of, of housing. I just, that, that to me is much higher priority than kind of anything else that, that, that COVID has, has caused. So I, I would like to focus, I would like to focus, you know, on this sort of blue square on the left.
How do others feel about that? I mean, I think again, we're, that's why we're coming to is to get some feedback. This was just sort of our best thinking at the moment, but I think we want to make sure we're reflective of council priorities. And so if, if others feel that way, I mean, I think that, yeah, it's, it also could be a timing thing to say our, our immediate need right now, as we, we have three years to deploy these dollars, are around the areas of housing and homelessness and anything, including city services needed to support more units getting out there. So permitting code, also just keep some of the support services. So I want to make sure as council is looking at those things, it's communicating, making sure that we've got communication resources to. I think that's always a challenge is we're doing a lot of things and sometimes it's just having the bandwidth to share that information or, or receive feedback on certain things. So, and that's fine to put us, to give us even more focus. I, I think, and I'll let staff sort of share some of those other pieces that you mentioned, but I, I would welcome that kind of feedback and focus if this council wants to, or the subcommittee, I mean, it has to go to the full council, but, you know, wants to, to put a more of an exclamation point around housing issues, that's valid.
I agree with that and apologize. I'm having some internet connectivity issues. So if people can't hear me, please give me a wave. I, you know, I think it is kind of a, a timing and pacing of the allocations and, and looking at kind of putting that emphasis on housing and keeping people in their homes as kind of the like stabilization, the, the most immediate stabilization that's needed. And then kind of getting more strategic with longer-term investments in childcare and workforce. And as we go along, I also agree with Anthony that those are obviously critically important. It's just if we're looking at this kind of quick strike as like the emergency, what's needed now? People obviously urgently need, need, you know, both permanent and kind of temporary emergency housing.
Counselor Perkins, on that point, did you have a?
In terms of?
Oh, sorry, Jenna.
I was just going to clarify. So in terms of this, this quick strike funding, this was the like September, October, the August, September kind of timeframe of like this, that's when we would kind of spend these dollars. And then I see the rest, you know, for the rest of 2021, then we'd be kind of looking into the rest of it.
Counselor Perkins, did you have anything to add? We're kind of talking about the?
No, I, I, I agree with Jenna and Anthony. The, the biggest need that I'm seeing and hearing about every day is, is housing and housing assistance.
And then from a staff perspective, anything to share or any, I just want to make sure that we're not missing something as we're talking about those items under the BEADUP strategic plan. So again, it's not, what I'm hearing from the council subcommittee is, yeah, those are, are important, but maybe not right in this first tranche of executing funding. Let's, let's focus on, on housing and maybe, I just want to make sure there isn't anything in the, in the immediate, near term that we might be missing an opportunity. So just wanted to hear from staff real quickly.
I, I think my only point was that I wanted to make sure we could continue to negotiate with our childcare and workforce development partners to really understand the programs that are being put together and the extent of their request from the cities at this point. So we will continue to have those conversations and then we might, so instead of doing a summer deployment of those cohorts that we talked about around childcare and construction, we might be looking at fall cohorts for those workforce development dollars, neither of which would be large investments from the city. So if, if that's okay, just in terms of a timing, rather than, that, that would totally work for us. I don't want to miss the opportunity to build out the capacity for that workforce training. And I agree with all of you. I understand the, the acute housing need.
How much are we talking, Carolyn?
So to start, I was really thinking maybe two $50,000 allocations, one for something around childcare and one for something around other workforce development. And then there is OSU, as you know, OSU got a large allocation for their new childcare location on campus in concert with COCC and, but still would need operational funds to get that up and running. So those are the three sort of project areas that we've been talking with COCC, East Cascade Works, Neighbor Impact, the SBDC and OSU and COCC.
And I know one thing, just to add to that conversation with childcare, I know that there was some, the city provided some funding for Ben Parks and Rec for their before and after school. Some of you might know it as Kids, Inc., and that was really just to help to kind of reimagine the program, especially for some more vulnerable community members that are really in service sector jobs that couldn't be at home with kids, et cetera. So there's some talk of continuing that need as we look towards the fall and helping those families out that, that would like to be part of that program for their, so that their parents that are in jobs can stay in those jobs. That's, that's going to become harder. I think a lot of those relief dollars are going to start winding down. So I think that was, that was just one example of where childcare is a, is that kind of basic element to helping keep people in the workforce and therefore keeping them in their home. So it had a ripple effect and there was some time, and there is some, as we've talked about, some funding set aside. I think Neighbor Impact's been receiving some funds through some direct allocation. And even through the states, the, our state delegation, it's been allocated funding from the $2 billion from the state has been earmarked for childcare. So there's a lot there. So I, again, I think as Carolyn's saying, we're not quite sure that we need to solve this problem, problem single-handedly. But it was that example where there might be some buy-down of the, like a park, the before and after school programs that might be helpful.
It all fits into the keeping people in their housing that they already have, for sure. If we can keep people earning, getting their unemployment benefits while they're training for their, so it's, it's all part of that same continuum.
I think hearing those specifics, I'm a little more comfortable with kind of keeping this on the list, understanding that it's, it's pretty small proportion of the overall kind of quick strike funds that we're thinking of and more in line with kind of keeping, keeping commitments we're making to, you know, it's, this is kind of like round services that are all related to keeping people in their homes. Definitely understand that. So I don't know how Megan and Anthony, if, if your thinking changes hearing those details, but I think, you know, I'm open to keeping a, keeping a small portion of funding, you know, available for, for those needs if they arise.
Well, it might be that we don't need it. I think that's the, we want to be opportunistic. That's what you're hearing from staff. And if there is something that just gets us over the edge. But what I'm, I'm, and I want to reflect what I'm hearing from council, which is very valuable. Let's prioritize housing and homelessness first. And if there's still just that last couple of dollars that are needed to get a program effective, that you're open to that conversation, I think just having that as a, as a general sort of rule of thumb as we move through the next couple of months would be helpful.
Yeah, it's, that's a pretty small amount in the big scheme of things and it's very small amount in the big scheme of the general fund. So if, it seems like we could do a lot of good there. I just, I don't want us to be limited to 1.4 if the need warrants spending more, even if that happens before the end of the year. So I agree with, I agree with Jenna.
Miki, some of the other prompting questions that, that you had? I think we've been kind of answering them as we go along here. If you, do you mind just going back to that last slide?
Sure. And, and actually, Counselor Brodmann, do you mind repeating the last thing you said? Because it froze to me and I don't know if it froze for the recording as well.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The last part I heard was at the end of the year and then I missed whatever else you said before that.
Yeah, I just, I don't want us to be limited, like I said, the first thing, I don't want us to be limited by 1.4 if the need warrants spending more. So I mean, my two main concerns are that the county is carrying its weight, particularly when it comes to public health. And we are a partner with them and that we are spending these resources consistent with the need that exists. You know, so I don't want to be arbitrarily married to 10% when, you know, we know we need a managed camp and we know this county is going to kick in a particular amount. I would rather just get going.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. And let me bring us back to the questions. So quick strike allocation, your thoughts on the outline of spend categories and our collaboration with partners? And I'll go back to, we had the quick strike deck up. And then here's the other more time distribution from 2021 to 2024. Any thoughts on this one?
Yeah. And again, so this is kind of this matching exercise, looking at council goals, budget committee priorities, allowed uses and trying to put it together in a, in a framework plan at the, at a high level of kind of, here's what we do quick and then here's the longer term. And did we get the high level about right? Are there things that you want to put an exclamation point on or maybe detune here and tune up over there? So that same kind of discussion that we just had with the quick strike.
I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I didn't mention Melanie's need for our streets to be under infrastructure. I know that she's, she's very interested in that. That's something that she will bring up as well.
The only challenge with that is, so as Miki outlined, kind of the three packages moving through, the one that's passed. The one that's currently being considered is really all about transportation, which is why I think they tried to focus the ARPA funds on water, sewer and broadband and not streets. So I think there's a, it's a challenge to put street projects, although we're, we're going to try. I think as we've noted with the, like the midtown crossings and some of the BCD work and that allocation there. But it's, I, I think the other, that package that's kind of working its way now will be a better opportunity than this.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. What is the, what is the data that, that suggests that we need to be focused on angel investor funding through these dollars? And I'm just thinking, you know, I, everything I've read, and I could be totally wrong, is that the VC world is booming right now. And I, I'm curious, do, what, what role would we have in funding angel investment?
I, I, I think the, the aim here was more around, we support specific initiatives around business assistance. So maybe not a direct allocation to a, a business, but an effort. So kind of going back to the partnership, but with a broader scope. So not, not actually getting the city into the VC world, but we should maybe change the wording a little bit going forward.
Okay. Yeah. In terms of focusing on the bottom part of the K, I'm all for targeted business assistance for, for one, businesses that need it. And two, businesses that have not been able to take advantage of idle or PPP or, you know, the closed venues assistance or all of the several state and federal tools that have been used to prop up businesses during this public health disaster. But I want to be very cautious there because I think the, you know, the aim of, of this fund should be to, for that, focused on that sort of bottom part of the K.
Agreed. Yeah. I think, I'm thinking more about this. One thing we've discussed is partnering with the Small Business Development Center, who is getting an in-depth look at businesses that are applying for PPP and other programs and really figuring out where those gaps are. So there could be potentially very targeted business assistance and kind of fits into angel investor funding broadly, but it's, it wouldn't be in, with the aim of getting return. It would be saying, you know, yoga studios, for example, really struggled and didn't qualify for a significant amount of funding or, or something similar, really targeting sectors or specific business types.
Well, then maybe Ben, we just need to change the language a little bit on that because I, I think that maybe a little bit too broad. The way that it's.
Agreed. Yeah. It confused me as well. So I'll, we'll change it.
Other feedback on, I mean, it's fairly similar to the, the other chart with the additional section around infrastructure.
Do we envision that some of the items in the, the previous chart would also be funded with this? Like with that, that some of that funding?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I'm thinking for campgrounds or managed camps, for example, like just all under shelter operations, like do, do some of that, you know, do some of those items kind of carried forward into the bigger, longer-term funding?
Yeah. To me, that there isn't, the, the housing homelessness, I think what I'm hearing from you all, and I think this is just the world that we are in, there might be some opportunities that surface here in the next couple of weeks that we want to take advantage of. And, and hopefully, I think I would just encourage you to, let's be open to those partnership opportunities because there are other funding sources and some when we talk about really solving some of our housing homelessness challenges, they require significant investment. So our 14 million alone, or even our 7 million that we only have right now for this first year is not going to be enough. So, but by all means, if something kind of solidifies and I think we can line it up for execution earlier, the better. We just want to be realistic with our, some of these discussions that involve other boards and actions that they might take and prioritizing in their own process to figure out funding. I just didn't see all of that becoming crystal clear in the next month or two. I think that most likely is going to take place later on in the fall. I don't think it's going to be, you know, another year later, it's going to be months. And so I, I, Jenna, going back to your question, a lot of those items that maybe on that one point, the, that first 10% could easily slide into this more longer-term item or vice versa, right? They're pretty, I think interchangeable. It's just, we're trying to be realistic about what's possible in the next couple of months. And we know that we're acquiring sites, we're in the process of acquiring sites and we just had our announcement today. And I think we've got that up and running. But there's, you know, as you're buying sites, operating them, we just want to make sure there's funds available to be able to make sure that we can do this successfully. And so giving ourselves a little flexibility is really important. As well as we're applying for grant funds, we don't know if those will come through or not. We want to capitalize on the due diligence that we have been doing, that council's been doing and staff over the last couple of months. So there's a lot sort of up in the air a bit in that housing homelessness. And we'll continue to be opportunistic, be looking for quick strikes. And that includes managed camps, other facility purchases, other support services that are needed, et cetera. But it's not, as I wish the world were, you know, a lot of these things are in play. And so we just don't have the ability to. And so we just don't have the ability to really start assigning very specific things to them quite yet.
And shelter operations means financially contributing to shelter operations, not that the city would be operating shelters.
Correct. Yes. Thank you for that clarification. It's just, again, using these funds to, to help with any gaps. I, and I say all that too, because I want us to also be careful that these are one-time funds. So we, we need to be really careful about ongoing operations and commitments. And be, you know, if there is some bridge funding, while we get the sustainable funding, I think that's fine. But we, some of that longer term funding that we're going to be talking about through the City County Task Force, I think is a critical component of to say, okay, we are collectively working on this revenue source that's going to support this operations in the long term. But to get this going, we need this amount of money. And, you know, that's a perfectly reasonable use of the ARPA funds to kind of get us going. But we, we don't want to, we want to make sure that we don't think of this as funding that's going to come in, going to be sustainable over time. So it's better used for frankly, for kind of one-time purchases like land or facilities or infrastructure that's needed to support those facilities. So our tendency is going to move to, to look more in that direction of getting things up and running and less towards ongoing operations. However, there just might be some flexibility needed to, to kind of get things at least launched that we might be using some of these funds for.
Yeah, I've heard that concern from a lot of the providers in our, in our area about the sustainability of it. I appreciate you saying that.
Doesn't that also dovetail with our hopes for these temporary solutions anyway? I mean, the goal is to not have a managed camp at some point in the near future. So, I mean, the Navigation Center, I think, is a good piece of infrastructure that will probably be in operation. But if we're really focused on, you know, the community solutions approach and Bakersfield and things like that, I mean, hopefully we can spend the money on the infrastructure and, and, and not have to fund it indefinitely in terms of services into the future, if we do it right, or if the county does it right.
On the managed camp example, I may be getting too detailed here, but I, you know, I'd really like for us to think about that as, as potentially just a campground. Rather than thinking of it as just a managed camp, that we actually are also thinking about how that can provide a, provide a safe and sanitary place for people to camp, you know, who are in transition, who are moving through the community or potentially even who are visiting because we, you know, it's a, yeah, it's an issue. No matter the reason why people are camping like on public lands, you know, some of the issues presented are the same. And so providing places for people to do that, I think, is potentially a broader goal than just kind of getting through this period toward where there's more stable permanent option for people.
Well, as a, as a first step in, in that, I think there's some opportunity with both the city, county, potentially ODAT. We all have public owned, publicly owned lands in and around Bend. And we are just beginning an effort to surplus our own public. We, we've done this before, we surplus our land for affordable housing. And as we have, you know, very acute needs for our houseless population, you know, are there some potential to surplus that land for a managed camper or something similar? And so we'd like to ask our partners, the county and ODAT to, to join with us in that effort. So we're working on crafting some communication that would see if we could do one process to kind of build towards what you're saying, Councilor Goodman Campbell of, you know, some efficiency and leveraging the, our publicly owned property and seeing if there's some, and then added to that with some, maybe some investments from ARPA funds to be able to have a more safe and, and healthy, you know, can be managed structured sort of environment than the current environment that we have now. And to see if that's possible with, at least starting with publicly owned land. So I don't know if Carolyn or if you want to talk more about that, but just some, some thoughts. And I want to make sure this subcommittee is in general agreement with that. And I think we're, you know, kind of open to, to asking our partners at the county and ODAT to be part of that process.
Yeah, thanks Eric. There's sort of two, there's two prongs to this approach, as you can imagine. So if we want to use the allowance under House Bill 2006, then we want to identify the publicly owned land and probably keep it publicly owned so that we have that supersiting ability. And that is really a great, quick, quick comparatively way to make sure that we get some transitional housing, whether, you know, as informal or as formal as we want that to be, but really a safer place for families to stay. And then for deed restricted affordable housing, we've been successful with the surplus property process, which council deems the land surplus or the commission or ODAT. And then we, through the Affordable Housing Committee, do it our, a formal RFP. And that way we make sure we get every nook and cranny out of that land to get all the units that we possibly could. So the letter or the, or drafting to the county is really that the commissioners would consider going through that publicly owned identification land process together with the city, identify the most appropriate pieces of land for which use transitional or affordable housing. And then ask the county if they would consider using our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and staff in our Economic Development Department to really make sure we put forward the best projects for the entire community in a, in a more coordinated manner. So we've had so much success using the Affordable Housing Committee. Lynn McConnell speaks to prospective affordable housing developers all the time. And there, we know that land is the most significant price cost driver, if you will, for these projects. So if we, as the public agency, agencies can take that price out of the development, we may be able to bring more units and, and more safe places to stay forward for the community faster. Did I get it, Eric? Was there anything else?
Yeah, no, thank you. And hey, Mickey, would you mind, I think we're good. We don't, we can unshare the screen just so everybody can see each other a little bit more. There we go. Thanks.
And one other point that has been brought up as we think about that coordinated effort is that it's great to have land and it's great to put the multiple layers of funding together to get the units onboard or under construction. Where we, as a city government who prioritize housing and not, or our, sort of our field of influence is housing, not necessarily services, we've really hit up against a barrier around the service dollars that are needed for ongoing operations. So the city government, you know, we did a huge step back in December with even having an emergency meeting to get that new fee approved and really looking, I think what we're hearing, it's great for the city, from our partners who would be on the hook to run these facilities. It's terrific that the city and county and other partners work together to identify land and to get the units built. But please don't stop the conversation there. Please continue the conversation around dedicated stable funding forces, sources for operations. So I think we want to get agreement that we want to identify land together between the city, county, ODAT and other public agencies. And then, then have the conversation about identifying stable funding. Scott Cooper says, that's great. We can probably figure out how to fund it for the next three years. After that, we're going to have a whole bunch of units potentially, but not the funds that we need to continue to, to provide the type of services that those guests or those residents might need.
Yeah, and again, these are, these are all conversations that we plan to have with the City County Task Force. But I think there is some, some urgency, at least on, and some opportunity to coordinate on property surplusing and some other things that we'd like to start now. And so we want some communication to move forward with the county commission here soon.
I guess one thing I'd like to add to this conversation, if we're looking, thinking again about the bottom of the K, our, you know, workforce, workforce housing, missing middle housing, you know, I think, I, so many people are getting squeezed out of, out of Bend these days. And I know that there are limits with, with AHAQ and like what we can do, percentage of AMI, that kind of thing. Getting creative about, about doing that with, with some of this money too, I think I would, something that I personally would like to see.
So we do, I think that's a great point. I think we, we've all, we've been pretty expert at building housing for 100% of AMI and less. There's always been conversation in the community, even the work that Ben 2030 did with the landscape report. They were asking us to go to 125 and then by the end of that conversation, going to 150. What we, I think there is some room. I know Lynn's talking with affordable housing developers and even market rate developers who would be willing to hold the, the prices down with some subsidy. It's unusual. I mean, we're one of the few communities in the country where we're saying that 150% of it is not affordable, right? So I think we have to be thoughtful about that. But with direction from you all, we could come back with a handful of ideas on how we might pursue that. The other conversation that we're having is asking the chamber to start bringing together some employer groups in industries to start talking about employer sponsored or employer supported housing. So they would bring us the projects and we would match them up with funding. We, there's only two people in the Affordable Housing Program in the city. And so we're adding one and a half. But even just the work that we talked about today, we, we are not positioned to be able to have all the, lead all those conversations in the community. And so really trying to incentivize or light a fire under some of our partners to start having conversations where they really have some influence of, or some sphere of influence to then bring the hospitality industry to the table to have a conversation about employer sponsored housing or to bring medical industry to have a conversation about employer sponsored housing. So we're trying to figure out where we can meet, meet up. But having a little bit of a runway to start thinking about what those projects might look like, we, we, we would be able to start to think about those a little bit more. But yeah, it's, it starts to get unruly.
Can we?
We have all the way to.
Is it legal, this is probably a question for Tracy, is it legal to, or maybe Michael, to, you know, if we, if we did start giving more STC waivers for middle housing projects, I would call low, middle, or like what, what is truly affordable, even though it's not capital A affordable? Can we make up for STC gaps with ARPA funds?
I don't think you can make a straight line to that, but I think there's ways to look at it. I mean, you're allowed to use the ARPA funds to look at housing for underserved populations. So I think if you structure it in such a way to say, our middle income is an underserved population in this area, I think there's a way to support it that way.
Like working people who cannot afford rent?
I, I would also point out that, you know, at the beginning, Mickey showed you there were three tranches. So we're in the ARPA money and then the jobs plan is infrastructure. That third one is for middle income and getting the middle class back. So there still is that third, you know, what is it, one and a half trillion or $2 trillion that, you know, is further down the road after the infrastructure package. So there may be more money coming for that population to, to provide more services for them.
And, and one thing that comes to mind is that we're in regular communication with the market rate builders who are trying, who have either an affordable housing arm or are trying to understand how they build for that median, that median household. We could bring back one or two or three interventions that the council could consider to, to help build out some units in that, in that price. And then we could see if there's a link to ARPA funds or if there's some other, other way to get there. But let's, it might be interesting to have some real projects on the line to see what would be the right intervention.
And just to remind council, one of the items on the work plan over the next two years are a revamping of STCs for water, sewer and transportation. And there'll be some significant policy work. Most likely that'll fall to the Community Building Subcommittee to work on some of the details. But one of the items that you could consider is, you know, footprint of a home, et cetera. We've, as Councilor Goodman Campbell knows, we've, we've talked a little bit about that, but a full deep dive and actually execution on something like that is something that is scheduled for over the next two years, including, you know, incentivizing some of those smaller units to help with affordability.
Little bit of a detour, hi everyone, but you will have a work session coming up. I believe we have it very tentatively scheduled for the first meeting in August on the House Bill 4079 pilot project, which is a mixed income potential development that we were awarded through a state legislative pilot for a streamlined GGB expansion. That one is very much aimed at that middle income sector. And so do know that there's work ongoing on this topic already. We haven't quite shaped it in a way to present all of the options to you, but that is coming. And so I will certainly keep this conversation in the back of my mind as we continue to think through what that work session looks like and what some options might be to continue to move that pilot. So that's not necessarily ARPA related, but certainly great discussion coming, I hope.
All right. So as Mickey had talked about, I think our next step would be one more meeting to, to discuss this, this broad plan and then maybe a little more, we'll have more information hopefully to by, by then to start putting some more concrete kind of actions proposals as part of this Quick Strike that we would outline with the Human Rights and Equity Commission, BDAB, and then Economic Development Advisory Board and Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and engage in a conversation with those groups. And then the next step would be the July quarterly update, July 21st. We'll take a little bit of a break as council, we don't have that first meeting in July. So we'll come back and then we'll use the, our, the majority of our work session time to really sketch out this, this plan as well as the, the broader kind of supplemental budget to make sure that we're staffed appropriately to execute on, on council goals and making adjustments as needed to make sure that we're effective and focused on the right things. We've got a big body of work out of us. We can't do it all, all at once. It's going to have to be sequenced appropriately. So we'll be, begin sharing that with council on the 21st. With that execution, that either as soon as the, the next meeting in August or shortly thereafter. And when I say execution, that means the formal adoption of a supplemental budget that would allow the, the funds to get out there.
One more general comment that wasn't related to housing. But along the, in the business assistance and kind of workforce development, I'd really like to see us kind of like putting all of these pieces together and thinking about like what it means to, you know, to further that goal we have of, of people who work in Bend or live in, being able to afford, you know, to live here. And so like putting that together with making sure that the assist industries that are able to provide a living wage or that, you know, that are, are stable and able to, you know, pay people enough to live here. And that those two pieces are kind of matching up. So that, that's just like a very general comment, but encouraging staff to think in that way.
That's why we put so much effort in the council goals and the language to make sure that as staff, we're understanding council's intent. And we're doing our best to try to, to create a space to execute. I think it is, again, I'll just say it's a big body of work and there's a lot. And we're trying to delve into those areas that are outside of our core services. So it's not necessar, they're not necessarily areas that we are well attuned to, which is again, why we have these stewardship subcommittees, because we're going to need to rely on our partners and advocacy to our partners to help, you know, like with the county with support services and funding and state. I think the state needs to be part of that conversation. So we just don't have the tax base or the discretion to fund all these needed programs at the local level. We're going to need some assistance from our other partners to, to, I think, see these, all the great things that you want to see happen as part of the intentions laid out in council goals. All right. With that, Mickey, is there anything else? Did we, we, we kind of answered the questions, the three questions more dynamically. So I think we were able to capture that through the notes and continue on kind of with, with this plan based on the feedback. And just to summarize what I heard, that, you know, want the, to be flexible with whatever we define as Quick Strike, make sure that it's the right, it, there's not a big concern about the actual number of the, the amount of dollars to spend. Let's be opportunistic with what surfaces here in the next couple of months. That I also heard that housing and homelessness is the top. So let's prioritize that over anything else. If there are some other leveraged funds that are important for workforce development, childcare, fine. But let's make sure that we, again, those, the. But let's make sure that we, again, those, the, the bigger picture is housing and homelessness right now. And I'm going off of my memories. I might've missed some of the key points Mickey I'm sure is, and others are taking good notes. So we'll, if I miss something, it'll be captured there.
Yes. And we're going to put city services under housing and healthlessness. And we've changed a few wardings and utility assistance perhaps under vulnerable population services. And then we're hoping to meet by June, the week of June 17th. So expect to see some doodle survey from us.
Well, and just wanted to say thank you to staff for the amount of work that went into this plan and outlining this for us. I know it's a lot of work. Thank you.
Yeah, we can't tell that this is outside of your comfort zone. So if that's any. Well, well done to everybody. Appreciate you thinking of all this before we can get to it.
Well, I mean, it's, it's new territory for us too. I mean, this is not, in my 20 some years in local government, I haven't really seen this sort of like, here's some funds, you know, and the ability to have some flexibility. And we actually have some time too. So it's a, it's an interesting paradigm shift, you know? So we're all kind of learning how to, we want to, I think what we're all very conscious of, of not, again, letting expediency urgency sort of overtake what really could be a good partnership project that, that has deep roots and that is funded long-term, that is well-supported, et cetera. We want to make sure that we're, we keep our eye on the prize for some of those, those needed services. But we have a pandemic that we're managing through and we still have a, you know, and we are all, and what you're sort of articulating is that we have a housing crisis that is getting worse and worse and worse. And so to the extent that we can use some of these funds to help us get out of that, all the better. So we will keep that front and center for sure. All right. I think we'll end it there. Be back some time. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Bye, thanks everyone.
Thanks. Hi Juan, are you still there?